Is there a trish?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is, this is a non-voting meeting. This is our committee meeting. We did have an executive session tonight to discuss a personnel issue, so I will apologize for a little bit of a delay here. I would like to have, make sure that all individuals that are sitting out there, please make sure you sign the, the sign-in sheet. And then, any of you that are making comments tonight, if you could either let a copy of your comments with us or email them in, so we have them for the minutes, we'd greatly appreciate it. I would also like to remind everybody of Policy 903. I'm not gonna read the whole policy to you, but I'm just gonna remind everyone, since we do have a large crowd. All individuals wishing to participate in an open board meeting shall register their intent with the Board Secretary one business day in advance of the meeting, and shall include the name and address of the participants and the topic of which to be addressed. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by any, any announcement of their name and group affiliation. Each statement made by participants shall be limited to five minutes. So, I know we have a fairly large crowd here, so let's give everybody their time to speak, and, you know, and if you're not on the agenda, I would ask that you try not to speak. In essence of time. So, um, so with that, that will move us right to public comment, and Mr. Ebert is first one up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Upper Adams School District is a public school district and consequently is made of a wide variety of students and their parents who come from all walks of life. There are Jewish, Catholic, Protestant, and non-believers, different cultures and traditions, different political parties, there are gay and straight. All those students and their parents have fundamental and legal rights. As a board, your job is to create a school environment in which each of these students can grow and thrive. As a board, you need to ensure that their legal rights are protected and not violated. A fundamental tenet of educational law is in loco parentis, in place of the parent. Parents trust us to care for their students during school hours, then take them back at the end of the day. Parents can choose from public school, homeschooling, private, and parochial schools, and more recently charter and cyber charter schools. We are thankful that a majority of parents still choose a public education. The board and the community need to provide a nurturing, accepting environment for them to learn without unnecessary rules and restrictions that infringe upon their individual rights. No one wants books in our library that are inappropriate, but who better to determine what books are appropriate for their child than their respective individual parent? I attended the April 4th, 2024 policy meeting held in this auditorium to caution the board on several issues related to Policy 109.1, and I think on a earlier version I had 139, so that is corrected. I recommend that the board keep the scope of the policy narrow and not allow just anyone nor everyone to weigh in with complaints about specific library books. I also urge the board to treat books in classroom libraries as if they were, not to treat books in classroom libraries as if they were the books found in our school library. These two libraries are completely different collections and completely different purposes and managed in a totally different manner. Our teachers are teachers, not librarians. I hope you are still considering those recommendations at this time. I also caution against taking the free advice of religious-oriented law firms that have sown controversy and turmoil in neighboring districts and resulted in expensive lawsuits. How is that free? At the policy meeting in April, one high school librarian, or our high school librarian, Nicole Starter, explained in detail via videos how USD Upper Adams School District has developed the practice of permitting parents to notify the library staff which books they do not want their children to check out of the library. The district library circulation software then alerts the staff that the book is deemed unacceptable for the particular student. If you do not want your students to read Tom Sawyer, simply notify the librarian. The child is protected and the parent's wishes are satisfied. There is no banning, book banning required. There is no infringement of student rights involved. If, however, your goal is to impose your religious, political, and personal values on every other student in the district, then a strong oppressive book banning policy would be necessary. However, if your goal is to provide means for parental input and allow the parents to monitor the child's checking out books, then a new, totally revised policy would not be needed. The old policy provides for the parental input and challenges. Tonight, we are to hear about the Independence Law Center and their free religious-based advice, at least I hope we are, we, the public, here about their services. At a recent presentation at the West Shore School District, ILC presented the information in a closed executive session. There's no provision in the law that such a closed, secret meeting is permissible.
You need to wrap it up, Mr. Ebert.
Okay, I'm heading down the final stretch, Mr. President. Is that the type of free legal advice we can expect? I hope ILC tells how the neighboring school districts such as Dover and others have spent time, spent millions of dollars.
You're gonna have to cut it off.
One more sentence. I recommend hiring attorneys that work towards a solution to keep us out of legal jeopardy, not determined to advance a particular religious agenda. I would urge the board to reject the engagement of ILC and their free legal advice. Thank you.
Next, we will have Ellie Hollaball for Jenny. Ah, no, I can never say your husband's name either, so.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Ellie Brannich, and as a graduate from the Upper Adams School District and a parent of two children currently attending school here, I'm here today to express extreme concern and adamant opposition to the retention of the Independence Law Center or to making any changes to Policy 109.1 regarding the selection of materials for libraries and media centers. This district has a policy in place that has proven for years that it works. I fully trust our educators to vet the titles introduced into the school system. The responsibility of selecting or excluding books for all children should never fall on an outside citizen. As a parent, it is my responsibility to be involved in and aware of the subject matter and materials being used to educate my children and ultimately decide if a piece of literature is appropriate. I would never expect that if I chose to remove a piece of literature from my child's purview that it should be removed from all children in the district. Public education should not be forced to conform to the radical opinions of a few. My children deserve to see this world, all of it. Books of all genres and the stories within them will allow them to experience many parts of the world that they will likely never get to see firsthand. Not every book can explore the world without also exploring sensitive subject matter, but should we stifle our children's creativity, emotional exposure, and potential for learning? To say that we protected them from some controversial topics, bad words, or horrible realities we pray they'll never have to experience firsthand? Unless I wanna put them in a sealed room for the rest of their lives, the best and most helpful thing I can do for them as their parent is to expose them of the realities of the world in which we live. My son enjoys reading and recently read several Catherine Applegate's books, including The One and Only Ivan, which won the John Newberry Medal for the Most Distinguished Contribution to American Literature for Children. He excitedly came to me after he finished it and said, "Mom, this book was so good, you have to read it." So, of course, I did. He wasn't wrong. The particular copy we had included Applegate's acceptance speech for the Newberry Award, from which I'd like to review a portion. After The One and Only Ivan was published, a bookstore contacted me about a pending elementary school visit. One of the parents was worried about using Ivan. She hadn't read it, they never have, as librarians know better than anybody, but she gathered that it was sad and might make some of the children cry. The bookstore, to its credit, reassured her thusly, "Absolutely, it would make them cry." And oh, by the way, that's a good thing. We live in a world where children are bullied into despair and even suicide, where armed guards in a school hallway are considered desirable, where libraries are padlocked because of budget cuts, where breakfasts and pack packs for too many children are unaffordable luxuries. Children know all about sadness. We can't hide it from them. We can only teach them how to cope with its inevitability and to harness their imaginations in the search for joy and wonder. Nothing, nothing in this world can do that better than a book. When my husband and I made the educated decision to send our children to public school, we did so knowing that we were sending them to a place with certified professionals who are there, not just because they possess the appropriate background in education to be there, but who are there because they want and care to be there. They accept the responsibility given to them with the knowledge and understanding that they too are playing a role in nurturing the students they serve, to follow our district's mantra, to make every student college and career ready. As a school board official, you too hold an incredible responsibility to the children in our district. If you care at all, then you should be seeing and hearing that these changes are not supported by the people they will affect. Are you listening? I'm not here to change any one person's belief system. I am here to remind you that your duty, as you accepted when you were sworn into office, is to abide by the U.S. Constitution and to represent 100% of the children you're making decisions for. You don't have to agree with it personally, but you should not be sitting around that table if you were not prepared to abide by federal law when you took your seat. You tout fiscal responsibility, and yet you knowingly want to enlist the services of a pro bono firm known to cost districts millions of dollars in settlements related to lawsuits that resulted from discriminatory policies put into place as a result of their advice. Let it cost, you said. Who will pay that price? The school board table is not the place for radical changes. It is the place for thoughtful administration of policies and procedures that make running an incredibly complex system work, the best it can, for the people hired and trusted to do the work of the district. More than anything, today's children, my children, need a safe place, free from judgment or punishment, from exploring this world. I implore you to allow our educators to continue to give them that freedom. I trust them, and you should too. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Dr. Jennifer Kane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who I may not have had the pleasure of meeting before, my name is Dr. Jennifer Kane. I have my doctorate in Education in Reading and Literacy. I have my master's degree in Reading Education. My bachelor's degree is in Elementary Education with a minor in Reading. I have taught in the neighboring district for 26 years. My main experience is in the third grade classroom and elementary Title I reading[853.82][854.32]intervention. For all intents and purposes, I have been a resident of the Upper Adams School District community my whole life. I am the daughter of a Canter. I attended school in these hallowed halls, and therefore I am proud to say I graduated as a Canter. All three of my children are Canters. Just last week, my daughter graduated from VHS and will be attending Saint Vincent College in the fall. I have two sons who will be freshmen and a sophomore here at VHS next year. In fact, my two boys went to preschool here with Mrs. Laura Fritz, your recent Understock Award recipient. Since it was discussed at the last board meeting, I'm a moderately conservative Christian. It really shouldn't matter, though, but I willingly give you my background, experience, and credentials per se to show you I am invested in this community and have reason to care about what happens at this school just as much, maybe more, than possibly others. When I see that VHS receives the ranking for best in something school again, that means something to me. That tells me that the people who have worked here worked hard to earn that honor. Accolades like that do not just happen overnight. High ratings on PSSA scores and Keystones take not only data studying and curriculum development, but they take relationship building and studying between curriculum development and teachers, administration, staff to make that happen with students. Students come to school with diverse backgrounds and needs. These needs require unique skill sets, but the teachers have learned and cultivated as professionals to bring out the best educational outcomes from their students. This is professionalism, knowledge, trust, and relationship building at its finest here at VHS. Which leads me to my main point for coming here tonight. Stock and Leader have been the council for USA, or UASD for many, many years, from my understanding, and I believe that Gareth from their firm has been here for close to possibly a decade. They have worked hard to build a strong reputation, not in just this district, but the local area for excellent reputation and council. Like the excellent ratings and reputation our school has nationally, Stock and Leader and Gareth did not just gain that reputation overnight, but earned it with high levels of leadership and knowledgeable, excuse me, knowledgeable legal counsel. I can personally attest to the relationship building the firm has done from a teacher's perspective, sitting on the opposite side of the negotiation table. There is a level of respect and trust that Gareth brings to a school board when assisting in negotiations that you cannot place monetary value on. This respect leads to a mutual understanding and better results for all parties. Since Stock and Leader's trust has been earned and is well-known in our area, I suppose I just don't understand why the district would wish to take on risky outside councils. Please help me understand why the district would seek out outside counsel whose very name is surrounded in controversy. Researchers quickly find its controversial issues surrounding the ILC's name. I asked the board why they did not seek out Stock and Leader or their council to see your way forward and clear any policy questions on the board. They are our council of record and higher. They would have been able to help you. Personally, I do not want to bring controversy, drama, slander, shame, and any other kind of negative attention to our district and our students. The ILC has a direct history attached to it with this kind of controversy. If anyone on this board has a personal agenda to try and change the culture more they feel going on in this world, do not bring it to the feet of my children, our children. You did not run on that platform, so that, to me, was a hidden agenda, and frankly, I did not vote for that. Take that concern to the state legislature. If you feel you must try to make any changes on your own, please. We just graduated an excellent class of students last Thursday, who are college, military, and career-ready. We have been given national accolades. We have created, we have trusted council. We do not need a media circus brought to our doorstep disrupting the lives of our students and school. This would incur a great monetary and social cost that frankly doesn't need to be paid. We have trusted council. Use them. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you tonight and publicly state my thoughts and opinions on current board issues.
And we did have a correspondence sent in by Jenny Knox, and that will be available to be read. If anyone wishes, you can contact, come into the school to read that. That will be attached to the minutes. And next, we have Jonathan Patriona. I'm sorry, Mrs. Mendez, I skipped over you, so we'll, we'll go with Jonathan first.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you stated, my name's Jonathan Patriona. I have three daughters in this district, and my wife is a teacher in this district. I'm a licensed attorney, and my questions and comments tonight revolve around the legal risk and involved in these perceived changes to policies at the guidance of a radical, religious, and politically motivated group that does not care about the dangers they leave in their wake. Who do these policy provisions benefit? And who do they harm? Can the board explain how they benefit the curriculum? Why are they necessary? Why can't we trust our current policy administrators and teachers? By changing these policies, do we not discriminate against other groups? And are we not violating the freedom of speech and opening ourselves up to a First Amendment challenge? Why should the board not trust its current solicitor from a well-respected law firm that is not politically and religiously affiliated? What absolute legal authority, both for state and federal, can you cite that these changes will not bring on First Amendment challenge? Especially given the fact that the ILC is being watched by other nonprofits such as the Southern Poverty Group that are fighting to defend the Constitution and free speech? And if you can't show well-established law for your potential actions, what is the risk-reward in enacting these policies? And how do you defend the district when the district gets sued? Who pays the bill? What stains do you leave on the district? Other school districts have had significant legal feats in similar situations, and the free promise hasn't worked out. Are board members prepared for lawsuit? Are you prepared for all your emails, all your communications coming out? Depositions, lengthy legal process? Are school board members protected under your director's insurance if you knowingly and negligently cause the school district financial harm? Can school board members be sued personally for causing the district financial harm? Especially if there's no shown correlation to these policy changes for educational reasons, and you acted purely on ideology, putting the entire district at risk for personal beliefs? In those instances, did you breach your duties to the community and the district? I'll end by just stating one thing. I'm particularly concerned by the financial impact this decision could have on the district and its ability to continue to provide high-level education without being hamstrung by ongoing legal battles, which in turn lead to academic and programming cuts. Thank you.
Okay, now, Ms. Janet Mendez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janet Mendez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I attended my first school board meeting two weeks ago. I left tired as the hour was late, but mostly confused. We'll come back to why I was confused later, but for now, I'd like to share a story with you. In a recent interaction, I was asked if racism was still a problem at Big Lebow High School. This couple had deemed the district racist, and that alone cemented their decision to not move here. My response was, "Not anymore." I detailed the diversity and inclusion practices in place. I retold them the story of my son returning home to tell me the school band had learned one of his favorite songs and played it at Fiesta Friday. The pride I felt as a VHS graduate and now parent with children in the district, detailing to these strangers the events that bring the students together to celebrate differences and highlight similarities, events I strongly encourage the board members to attend, with open minds, of course. I told you earlier, I was confused. Confused as to why a district that found itself in headlines for accusations of racism only a few years ago would even consider retaining the Independence Law Center, a law firm that finds itself in headlines for their controversial rewriting of school policies that seem to target those students who don't fit the ILC's mold. 2021 legal invoices after the racism accusations totaled over $125,000. Are we prepared to let it cost another $125,000? These accusations drew a lot of attention and stemmed from an anonymous social media account. Are we prepared to let a lawsuit cost more? Aligning with this law firm feels like a step backward instead of moving in the right direction. I hope that my comments serve as a reminder of our missteps, a reminder not to let history repeat itself. My hope tonight is not to spark division, but instead remind everyone of our similarities, the similar love and concern for our families. I urge those on the board and those listening to me today to choose their words carefully so as not to create division. I ask that you not spread false information regarding conservative families being bullied out of the district. False information like this preys on the fear of those who believe minorities are here to take everything away. But mostly, I encourage you to remember that you are here to protect the rights of all children. Children who don't look like you, who don't share your views, who don't worship the same God you do, and even those children that shout with pride, "Love is love." Finally, I'd like to end with this. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others. Philippians 2:3. Thank you.
Thank you, all speakers. There's nothing under athletics or activity, student activities, so that'll take us right to curriculum, Mrs. Jalal.
So, we have a spring comprehensive plan goals update from Mr. Robin.
Good evening, everyone. I am thrilled this evening because this is the largest crowd I've ever had for a comprehensive plan overview, and I know all of you are here to see and hear about this this evening, so thank you for attending. This is amazing. Usually, I get the first two syllables out of the comprehensive plan phrase, and someone comes up with an appointment or runs the other way, so it won't be that bad. I'm here this evening to share with the board a spring update of our comprehensive plan. I'm gonna start by giving a little background of the comprehensive plan process and then go into just a brief review of why we do this presentation in the fall and the spring, and what our goals are as a review for our former board members and for our new board members, so you can understand our goals. I would ask that all of you pull it up on Agenda Manager, so you don't have to strain your neck. It is the same presentation, or you're welcome to sit in the front row here, but we'll go through it. It's not very lengthy. So, the Pennsylvania Department of Education has a comprehensive plan process. It is a framework for continuous improvement in the state of Pennsylvania for all the school districts, and it is a three-year process. We're currently in year two of three. That means this coming school year, your administrative team will be working hard on developing and revising and enhancing a new comprehensive plan to present to you probably January or February of next year and getting your approval in March, when it has to be submitted. And the part of that process, because it is three years, you might think, "Well, we have to start over every three years." Yes and no. Part of this process is about revising and enhancing what you're already doing. It's not that, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater or dump the apple cart type of thing. Some districts can do that. I mean, the option is there, but most districts that do that option typically start a new comprehensive plan almost right after they approve one, because it takes multiple years to get to that point, because you're looking at changing vision, mission, and those types of overarching. because it takes multiple years to get to that point, because you're looking at changing vision, mission, and those types of overarching statements in the district. For ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of the districts in Pennsylvania, when we come around to the comprehensive plan process, we simply revise and enhance what we currently have, look at our current goals. And there's a three-step process with that. We take inventory of what we're currently doing. So what we'll be doing next year, the first process, we'll be looking at test scores, attendance rates, graduation, graduation rates, folks that go to the Career and Tech Center, any job placements, job shadowing, those types of things. All that data comes in, that's our inventory. And then out of that inventory, we designate strengths and challenges and come up with two to three goals. The Pennsylvania Department of Education doesn't recommend a whole lot of going to a list of goals. They want you to really target and focus on your goals. So you'll see tonight, we have three goals in our current comprehensive plan. After we determine our goals, then we look at action steps. And we get those action steps, how are we going to meet those goals? What are we going to do? So our action steps for these three goals have been, last year, we took, again, an inventory and met with our folks in our buildings for each goal to see what we currently are doing, what is currently working, and what we would like to put in place to try something different, to try to improve what we're currently doing, depending on what goal we were talking about. The second year, this year, our action plan was to put those things in place. And next year, our third year, is when our review year. We're going to take a look at what we've done this year and what's working, what didn't work, what we're going to enhance, what we need to change. And it just continues. It's a cycle. There's a graphic out there on the Pennsylvania Department of Education website. It's a big circle with lots of arrows, and it just round and round it goes, and where it stops, nobody knows. Someone once said on a radio show back in the day, "Meet your boos," I believe, before my time. All right. So if you go to the first slide, comprehensive plan goals. So when we did this two years ago, we got it approved, we looked at, we looked at three different goals. We had an academic and behavioral goal, a communication, communication goal, and a school climate goal. So we grouped academic and behavioral into one, because we wanted to measure the effectiveness of that. Because research will tell us behavior and academics go hand in hand, and they can have an impact on each other, good and bad. So we wanted to keep those two pieces together. Communication is a two-way engagement, and again, that's one of those goals you may see again and again and again, and it's probably in a lot of other districts' comprehensive plans, because it's important to keep improving your communication with your community members and your stakeholders. And third, school climate, that was one of our initiatives that we started with several years ago, and we wanted to continue to focus on that. We give a school climate survey about every year or so and look at that data and use that data to drive programs in our buildings and to measure how we're doing climate and culture-wise within each of our grade levels in our buildings that we have. So goal number one. So what you see here, this is the, this is why we do fall and spring. So what we want to do is bring to the board what each building is doing to support each one of these goals kind of at the beginning of the year, and then show you what they've done at the end of the year. So you can kind of gauge the progress that has been made, what efforts are being done. And just so you know that we haven't forgotten about it, it's not on a shelf collecting dust somewhere. This is a plan that we keep in front of us. We talk about, Dr. Doll shares with us at every administration team meeting. Our goals, they're posted on the wall, posted on the website, so this is an active document. So that's why we bring it to you twice a year. I'm not going to read each and every one of these bullet points, you certainly can do that. I can point out some themes, which I will do as we go through these. But what I do is I meet with the principals, say, "How are you collecting, or how are you doing with these goals? What have you done since the last checkpoint, last time we presented to the board? What are some things you want me to share with the board?" And just have a, have a discussion on how that progress is being made. So some of the themes you'll see in Big Leville Intermediate Middle School here, you'll see progress monitoring, which is a fancy term for assessment, you know, checking, constantly checking in to see how students are doing. You might see, a term on here, it says classroom diagnostic tools. That, and then called CDTs, that is a state assessment product. It is free of charge to districts for districts to use, so we do use that. Tells us how our students are doing in reading, math, and science, and it has a very close correlation to the PSSA and Keystone exams, so it helps us gauge where deficits might be. So, and we use classroom diagnostic tools, we use iExcel, you'll see on here, and DIBLs at the elementary level. So that's always ongoing. As I said, we tie in behaviors, we have positive behavior support systems, you'll see that as a theme throughout as well, whether that's Rachel's Challenge, Can or Cares, or any type of positive behavior support plans. And then the third thing you'll, theme you'll see throughout the bullet points are targeted interventions. So we have Title I going on, we have all kinds of support groups, can intervention at the, at the middle school, which we're targeting different skill sets and providing interventions at that.
Mr. Albin, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Will you say again what Rachel's Challenge is, please?
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. Rachel's Challenge is a pro-kindness campaign. It's a national group that goes to different areas of the United States and promotes kindness. They, they share a story about Rachel, who was the first casualty in a school shooting. And that's how they start off. And then from that, it morphs into how can students grow from tragedy and how can they become more kind to one another? So they were in two years ago, and we hope to have them in again starting next year.
Thank you.
Right, the next slide, we have this Big Leville High School in special education. You'll see similar themes at the high school, but for special education, it looks a little different because of the way the comprehensive plan model works. Special education, as you know, and had Dr. Brewer present to you, is a different animal on its own as far as the plan, but those goals that he creates are tied to our goals, so they're kind of like a subset of the district goals. So some themes you'll see there are, again, the interventions that go along with our district goal, as well as transition planning. That is making sure kids are successful that may have behavior challenges or other issues that may prevent them from having success in school. We get those teachers together to make sure that transition is smooth, and then those kids are going to be successful. So they have that piece in the special ed world as well. Goal number two is communication goal, that's that two-way communication. And again, I won't read all of the bullets here, but some of the common themes, you'll see our family communication, whether that be through website, newsletters, social media, they're all, we're always looking to improve. How can we improve our messaging? How can we tell our story in a most positive way? And how can we get a comprehensive communication plan out to the community so they know what's going on, good or bad, and they know what's going on with their students as well? And the parent-teacher conferences, you'll see that as a, as a common theme throughout all of the schools as well to meet this goal. And you can see as well, PTO meetings, student council, that type of thing. And you'll see more of that, if we flip to the next slide. At the high school level, you can really see where the student impact comes together, because we have that district student forum, where students come and meet with Dr. Doll three times a year to discuss district concerns or learn about district matters. So they're definitely involved with student council, student clubs, and of course, the social media and newsletters that Mrs. Graham and her staff work on. Special education, you can see what they have there as far as their communication. Their, their goals on for communication are more aligned in building capacity to support our students, so we can provide better communication to parents on how they're progressing in the school. So it's a little bit different twist, but it's, it meets that same goal. And goal number three is our school climate. We did not do a school climate survey this year at the recommendation of the intermediate unit. We will be doing one next fall. So in past years, we've always done one in the spring, and after two or three years of that, we're like, ah, yeah. Maybe we're not getting the best data at that time of the year for a variety of reasons, so they recommended looking at like an October-November time period. So that's what we're going to do this coming fall. We're going to make sure all our parents, our teachers, our students, everybody will take that survey, and then we'll bring it to the board probably until it comes back, probably January, February time period. We'll share the results with you on that, and that will impact some of our updates in our buildings for school culture. So again, you can see some of the different bullet points here for school culture. Look at some of the themes, the school climate surveys mentioned in most of them, and that recognition for academic and behavioral successes are in there as well to increase that positive school climate. Got spirit days for most of the schools as well. See, the high school continues that theme. And then special education, again, we're looking at it more on building that capacity with staff in order so they can provide that culture, positive culture and climate for their students that may have some challenges that are might, could be above and beyond what a normal classroom might, might have. So we want to build that capacity. Anyone have any questions on this particular update?
Thank you, Mr. Albin.
Okay, next we have TSI, ATSI school plans for 2024, 2025. I'd like to invite Mr. Albin, Mrs. Buckley, and Mr. Brewer.
Back again. I'll discuss again. All right. So we wanted to take a moment this evening to talk to you about two school plans that we need to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education in August. And I'm going to share with you kind of the rationale why we have to do this, and then I'm going to let the principals share with you what their goals are for the two schools that have been selected. So what this is, is PD, Pennsylvania Department of Education, is charged from the federal government to provide additional support to schools that need additional support, that are, that are struggling or that have just been deemed, from whatever the criteria that the State Department of Education outlines, needs more support. So for Pennsylvania, they look at, Pennsylvania Department of Education looks at PSSAs, looks at Keystone data. You know, those are the two big measurements. So they put together in place a framework of support that schools can qualify for based on their test scores. So last year and this year, we had, we have two schools that qualify for this additional support. We have the Upper Adams Intermediate School, and we have the Upper Adams Middle School. And those schools qualified for this support, and we'll get to that here a little bit more directly, but for the English language learner population in that particular subgroup, there are many, many, many different subgroups that you can qualify for additional support. It could be any ethnicity group, it could be special education, it could be English language learners, as I, as I shared, it could be economically disadvantaged students. There's a whole host of different criteria based on what the Pennsylvania Department of Education outlines. When they determine whatever line they've drawn, it says a school might need some additional support. So we were very, we were excited to, that we have this additional support, because it's funneled through the intermediate school, and we are able to take advantage of their expertise, and there are folks that come out and meet with Mr. Brewer and Mrs. Buckley and their teams to help them write their goals, and also to provide them with professional development and different strategies that some of the teachers can use in their classrooms, so we can increase in that continuous improvement model, we talk about comprehensive plan, so we can get better and better as we go on. There is a goal, 2033 goal, now it was 2030, now it's 2033, that we are trying to get to for our scores. And based on that gap, that, that provides us, tells us whether we qualify for that support or don't qualify for that support. So the terms are TSI and ATSI. TSI is Targeted Support and Intervention. And ATSI is Additional Targeted Support Intervention. I wouldn't accuse PD of being creative, so go from there. So what's the difference? And you can follow along on your computers if you will. TSI, schools in which student performance by one or more student groups would benefit from additional support. And ATS, ATS is a step up. And that is for student groups that are consistently, and that's usually over a three-year period, problematic. They're just not, they just need that extra boost, that extra push. So ATS gives you a little bit more money to the intermediate schools to help us and look for more support. Or TSI, they get the support from the intermediate school, but it's mainly on the school then to kind of implement that. So just two different levels of support. There is an additional level outside of this, and that's CSI, and that's, that's when you go to comprehensive school improvement. And we have several school districts, I think in York County, that are unfortunately in, working in that area right now. So, but they're improving, and everyone continues to improve under this plan. So where does the data come from? How do, how do we qualify for this support? You can take a look at, obviously I mentioned PSSAs and Keystone exams. We also look at Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System, and we'll talk more about that in the fall as I refresh you when we, when we get the data back from our current tests we took in the spring, where we have achievement, which is, did they get the answer right? And growth, which, did they improve over time? We'll get into that more later, so hold your excitement. But, and there's also this World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. If you remember my 920 presentation on the PSSA at the last board meeting, I know it was late, but this was one of the WIDA assessment for English proficiency assessment. And I have this in reg, because this is what kicked us into support here at these two schools, was, was this particular assessment, which measures the proficiency of our English language learners and how well they are progressing in English proficiency. So, but I will say, that's what qualified us for the support, but we as a team are looking at it broadly, and we are looking at how can we increase and improve the entire building, all grade levels, all students, all subgroups. Even though that's what qualified for us, we're looking at everybody. We're going to improve everybody. So when we looked at the English language learners, we know we have challenges with this group, and I could put up any, any group up here, any ethnicity not targeting, singling out or anything. This is just, these are just known challenges that we embrace, we celebrate, and we put in action plans to address. And we have the English language proficiency, transancy is typically high with this subgroup, financial needs, absenteeism, and homeschool connections. And we're going to, we have action plans, and our goals are centered around these challenges that research has shown that this group particularly has. And you could put any of those probably in a number of different subgroups, but this is particular for why we qualified for this support. So once again, TSI and ATS, difference, TSI, Targeted Support and Intervention, ATS, Additional Targeted Support Intervention. Middle school is ATS. Upper Adams Intermediate School is TSI. So when we look at developing these school plans, what we do, and this is an annual process, we look at the data, just like we do for comprehensive plan, we do a data review, we do an inventory. How's everything looking? Let's, let's sit down, and we crunch numbers. We are definitely data mining and seeing where our deficits are, where our successes are, who's doing well, why, who isn't, why? And then we look at root causes as to what's preventing us from, from getting to that, to the place we want to be in any certain area. And we develop the goals, and we develop the action plans. Should sound very familiar, same thing as comprehensive plan, basically the same process, just on a more middle school scale. Right, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Buckley first. She's going to talk about her two goals, and then Mr. Brewer will share with you about the intermediate school.
Good evening, everyone. Our team meets on a regular basis, as Mr. Albin was saying, looking at data and reviewing data and planning for improvement. We do that on a regular basis. We use the service dates and we also use our mornings. We have content meetings in the morning and that's where we really dive up deeply into our data to see what's working, what's not working, what are those subgroups looking like and how can we help improve those subgroups? We look at areas of strengths, we look at areas of concerns. So after evaluating the step of all those sources that Mr. Alvin's shared with us, the steering committee chose two separate goals. The first goal is by the end of the 2024, 25 school year, each teacher will use specific assessment data to implement differentiated instruction at least two times throughout a six-day cycle. And that will be implemented with consistency and fidelity. Differentiation is the process of tailoring instruction to meet needs and strengths. So as adults, we even know we all learn a little differently. Some are visual learners, some are tactile, some auditory. And so we will make sure we assess those students to see what mood do they learn best and we'll provide that instruction for them in a variety of ways. They'll have the same goal, but they'll just get there in a different manner. We will be providing, as we have, we always do, but we will continue to provide enrichment and acceleration for those accelerated learners. We selected differentiation because it engages students at all different levels. You are instructing students on how they learn best, which is best practice. It's impactful and it will cover a variety of subgroups. So that's our first goal. Our second goal is related to positive relationships. We feel strongly as Upper Adams School District teachers and staff, positive relationships are extremely important to us. So one of our goals is by the end of the 2024, 25 school year, the staff will implement school-wide initiatives to enhance positive relationships among the school community, resulting in a 10% decrease in our disciplinary laws. So any research that you find, that you will see that positive relationships boost motivation, it boosts cooperation and so in turn increases academic success. We'll be adding additional incentives and initiatives to our current behavior program and they'll include things like student team building activities, parent and community outreach programs, mentorships and additional social skills for those students who need that. Again, our goal is to decrease those disciplinary laws. You know by, we all know by improving student-teacher relationships and student-student relationships, it will improve attendance, it will increase the willingness to participate in class and students will feel more comfortable taking risks. So that's really our goal to lead for academic success. Those are our two goals at our intermediate building.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckley. And Mr. Brewer.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. As Mrs. Buckley said, at the middle school, we have several goals as well. By the end of June, our team will have met almost, I think eight times in total to discuss what we feel is best for the students at the middle school. Through collaboration with different areas or in different areas and with different folks throughout the secondary and the middle school campuses, we came up with three goals this year we wanted to focus on and we felt would best meet the needs of our students where they are currently. So our first goal is we want to establish a data team. We're going to look at the various sources of data that we have and we're going to dedicate at least one day a month to really look at that data and utilize that data to identify specific student strengths and weaknesses. And then discuss how are we going to use that data to help move those students who are struggling or improve the strengths of the students who are successful. Our second goal is to decide what types of data will we use. Currently, we are using CDTs, which is the diagnostic, classroom diagnostic test given by the state. They are aligned to state standards. We feel that they are very accurate and give us a good indication of how our students are doing currently with the curriculum that we have in place. We've adopted the IXL program in both language arts and math. This is our second year, our first full year of implementing both language and, and math areas. Teachers really like it. It gives us a diagnostic, it gives us a, a brief snapshot of where our students are currently, at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year and at the end of the year, so we can gauge what their learning progress have been and where those strengths and weaknesses lie when we begin the next school year. Our third goal is to look at a multi-tiered system of supports. So what we're going to look for is to begin to look at a framework, put in place that framework, discuss what those tiers of interventions might look like. Is it tier one, tier two, tier three? What is the criteria that we are going to look for? And what will students be showing us that will move them throughout those different tiers? And what needs will we need to meet for those students to be successful to move them in and out of those different tiers? This goal is to provide a system of supports for students who may have or may be in need of specific academic areas or are in varying levels of, of success. As Mr. Alvin mentioned earlier, these goals are meant to meet the needs of all students. So these, these goals will be applied in math, science, ELA and history for the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
So where do we go from here? Part of the process, whether it be comprehensive plan or these school plans, we need to let things sit. So we need to have like a preview phase, just like any government, when they change laws and so forth, they have a period where they kind of just put it out there and let people look at it. And that's what this process is. So we will be posting this on our website, we'll place a copy in our meeting room upstairs in the administration office and it will be available for anyone that wants to review it between now and August. So at our August committee meeting, I will share with this board, I'll say, remember this presentation? And I'll just share with you that it'll be on for record and approval for the August, I think it's August 20th, board meeting at that time. But you want this approved for presentation and I'll just remind you of the presentation. If you have any feedback, you're certainly welcome to meet with the principals or myself and we, or we can certainly meet with you to go over it in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvin.
Thank you, Mrs. Jalal. That will conclude our business, our curriculum and extracurricular meeting. I'll, does anyone need to take a quick intermission? Everybody's good before we move into our business and operations? Everybody's good? Okay. We'll jump right into our business and operations and I would like to start that off with a roll call, please.
Mrs. Kraus?
Here.
Ms. Jalal?
Here.
Mrs. Hallivale?
Here.
Mr. Lustig?
Present.
Mrs. Plank?
Here.
Mr. Walmer?
Here.
Mr. Weigel?
Here.
Ms. Youngcover?
Here.
Mr. Lady?
Present.
Thank you.
We have nothing under property or transportation tonight, so that will jump us right to finance. Mr. Walmer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We'll start out with the item 4.1 and this is the extended school year transportation agreement with Folium doing business as Rolling Hills Transit and the contract is attached to the agenda. And this is strictly for summer transportation through the summer months and, and whenever the next school year begins. There's no questions, I'll move on to donations. School district received a basket of school supplies from Gettysburg Walmart to the Upper Adams Intermediate School. And the second donation is actually a correction. $500 was donated by AgCom Incorporated for the AgLab. Previously was reported as a donation from M&amp;T Bank. So just wanted to make that correction. And with that, I'll go to Mrs. Hobbs for budget update.
Good evening, thank you. Thank you once again for everyone being here. I know you're interested in our budget, what's it going to look at like for the next fiscal year? But I'm going to provide a very brief update of where we are currently for this current fiscal year and then just remind the board what happens in two weeks from now. Board members, this is also attached in your agenda and you also have a copy with you at your seat. So at this time of the year, I look at where we currently are with our revenues and expenditures and this is anything ending for June 30th of 2024. And we classify that, or we say that's fiscal year 24, so you may hear me reference that as well. So the very first thing we look at is our revenues and I'm going to draw your attention to the far right-hand side of the screen where you can see that our total revenue that we're projecting for the end of the year is just shy of $35 million. Now you will see that is above what we originally budgeted, which is located in that second column from the left. That is due to a number of favorable items that have come into our budget this year. For local revenue, we've had increase in our investments, meaning our interest rates being over 5%. We've had a very strong year on local taxes being collected as well. State, we actually received more money or will be receiving more money and this is due to the state budget not being passed last year on time. And so we didn't have those figures in order to budget for the year. And our federal dollars is regarding title and any S or funding that the district has received. So once again, we're estimating will be shy of just $35 million for this current fiscal year. As we look at the expenditure side, my estimated projection for expenditures is about $34,300. Once again, it's coming in under what was budgeted as well and we've been, the administrators are very conscious of their spending. We look at every item that does come through, how can we do it better? Is there something that we should be looking at? So when we look at the projections for the revenues and expenditures ending for fiscal year 24, you're going to see that we're going to have a positive variance of about $462,000. That's estimated at this time, anything can still happen until June 30th. And even after June 30th, expenses still will come in for this current fiscal year. So this is what we're projecting right now and you're saying, well, what does, what happens with those funds? And we add that into our assigned, our unassigned fund balance, I should say, that helps with the next year's budget. So we look at this, this is why this is a crucial point that we look at. And when we start preparing for the fiscal year 25 or any upcoming budget, it's really important that we start looking at this information. I share this with the board usually starting in January and sometimes they hear from me once or twice a month just to know where we stand. And actually, our budget process begins in October when we start looking at salary and benefits for the upcoming year, we do that rollover process. Building administrators work on their building budgets for their operational supplies and the building administrators have not asked for any increases within their building operational supplies, even with supplies going up. So they do really use their resources. We use joint purchasing cooperative programs to get the best money that we can for our supplies. So I do appreciate the work with the building administrators. We also, the administrators may come up with like what we call wish lists or additional asks that may be new to the budget and we've had those administrators come and speak to the board, trying to share their concerns, why they may need something for their building and then the board can indicate if that's something that should be included within the upcoming budgets or not. So the board does play an active role in the budget. One of the very, you know, important roles of the board is approving the final budget. So as we've looked through some of the fiscal year 25 information, in two weeks, the board will be voting on the final budget. We still have some unknowns, but we have some increases factored into the budget, but not knowing what the final numbers are yet. Some of those, the board has heard me speak to those would be the district liability insurance. Once again, our, just like your homeowners or your car insurance may go up every year, our district liability insurance does as well. Right now, that's at about $6,000 or so and I'm just waiting on some final numbers. And that's also due to, you know, we've had, haven't had any claims against the district. We haven't had any auto accidents. That includes, we have an item on the agenda tonight for workman's compensation. Once again, we haven't had any workman's comp claims. So when you start having claims, that's when your premiums would go up. So the district has been stable in those areas. We have a placement for new story, that's a special ed contract that we're still waiting to receive, so we just don't know what that may be. And depending upon an opening that we have within the, in the teacher's side for a speech pathologist, depending upon the timing of that, we may have to look at contracted services to begin the school year and we are researching those items as well. Also factored into the budget is just some additional risks. The state budget, we haven't heard anything about. If you, you might start hearing some of the buzzwords in the community about what the state may be talking about, but we don't know what the district may be receiving in state funds. They, we did add in about $150,000 in additional state money. Once again, that's a risk because if we don't receive that, then that would have to come from our unassigned fund balance. And will that budget be passed by June 30th? Another risk that we don't know. So we have to factor all those in as we are building the budget. And we have incorporated those items, as I mentioned. Here are some of the additional asks that the board or administrators have talked about and the board has included within the budget. I'm not going to go line by line because we've talked about those for several months now, but just can, being transparent of what the administrator and the board has included in the budget. So as we look at our final expenditures that we're looking at for fiscal year 25, so that would start July 1st and go to June 30th of 2025, the total expenses we're looking at a little bit over $36 million. And you can see where those categories end up. More details about these specific items are in previous presentations that I've done with the board that are included in the agenda manager and on our website as well. Sorry, I skipped a slide there. If you look here at their revenues, we're looking at revenues being about $34 million. So we are projecting a deficit for the fiscal year 25 of over $2.2 million. And you're saying, well, that's a lot of money, how are we going to cover that? If we look at this slide, we have money set aside in assigned funds, that's going to cover some of that because what's included in this budget is the Cumberland Perry renovation and our portion for our district is about $787,000. So that would come from the assigned fund that the previous board has set up. We have money set aside in a technology assigned fund and that's being used to pay for the faculty refresh of about $322,000. So what would be coming from our unassigned fund is just shy of 1.2 million. That's how the, we would be covering that deficit of 2.2 million. So when you look to the far right overall, once again, this is factoring in if we have a surplus for this year, that $462,000, knowing that we're going to have a deficit next year, we're still at a very healthy fund balance for the district overall. Once again, can we, you know, use this and know what the next budget may look like without a tax increase? Because this budget also does, has a 0% tax increase. Next year, we may have to have a different conversation and we may need to be looking at some things differently as of, you know, just where, what do we do? Is there a tax increase? Do we have to use more fund balance from something else? That's all a future conversation, but right now for fiscal year 25, it's included with a 0% tax increase with a variance of about $2.2 million. So going forward, we're still just waiting to hear from state updates. I know Mr. Alvin did receive title funding information today that did go down a little bit from what we received this year. We just didn't have the time to digest that and look at that and look at any applications. So that might be one minor change that will be updated for the June 6th, or I'm sorry, June 18th meeting. At that point, the board will be voting on the budget as well. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess not a question, but a comment that I hate that I can't see you down there, Shelley. If I'm correct, we've had four years with a 0% tax increase. Is that correct? I just think that speaks to the, to the prior boards working so very hard to, to keep a tight ship and just like it said, that we're working very hard to maintain that while still having a top-notch school district, in my opinion. So thank you, Shelley, for this presentation and Dr. Dal And Dr. Dahl for working towards that end.
Yes, thanks for all your hard work on this budget, Mrs. Hobbs. There's, the finish line is near, so we look forward to that. If there's no more questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is item 4.4. And this is an educational consultant agreement with Kelly Hammerslaw. And it's for language services from June 10th until July 31st of this year. And the agreement is attached to the agenda. This is an agreement spanning two fiscal years. Can we, can you provide some detail on this agreement, Ms. Hobbs?
Yes, this is regarding students that may be behind in some language services that we need to do for this year. So depending upon where their services are, like Mr. Walmer mentioned, that some of them may hit in this current fiscal year and some may go into the next fiscal year. And I believe the amount is not to exceed $2,000.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item 4.5. This is an engagement letter, an engagement letter with List, with Whistler, Earl Steen, LOP, and it's Conflict, wow, Conflict Council. Conflict Council and the document, the engagement letter is attached to the agenda.
I can speak to it, I don't know if anybody wants.
Yes, please.
There are times when I have Mr. Paulka sitting next to me, but there may be times where we may be in a situation where our council with the Stock and Leader may have a conflict of interest with either a company that we're working with, an agreement, those types of things. So we would like to have just a backup, someone on call that we could reach out to if we're notified by Stock and Leader that there's a conflict of interest. We would have another solicitor that we could reach out to. And this entity provides similar services at Stock and Leader?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dahl. On to item 4.6. This is a renewal of a contract with Navigate 360. And the contract is attached, and this deals with emergency and safety software. It's a software platform. Okay, if there's no questions on that, we'll move right on here to the, Mrs. Hobbs mentioned earlier, the workers' comp insurance renewal. And the annual cost is $31,985. And we're going to be seeing an increase of $1,731. But as Mrs. Hobbs mentioned, it's not due to any claims. Inflation, I suspect. Item 4.8, and this is kind of a formality approval needed here that's done yearly. And this is for Mrs. Hobbs to make any necessary budget transfers and assignments of the fund balance. And that's in accordance and after the annual audit. Next up is a quote in the Agenda Manager, and this is from Abacus for a floor. It's a rejuvenation of the floor in the North Gym. The total cost of the project, $79,865. And this is going to be paid for out of the capital reserve funds already allocated for this project. We'll keep moving right here on to item 4.10. This is a waiver. Again, this is, has been done in past years. This is to, for My School Bucks, which is the software program where parents can prepay for school lunches. And this is essentially waiving the service fee, service fee charged by My School Bucks. And another quote, this quote is to replace the cooler floor in the high school cafeteria cooler. And it'll be paid for out of the food service funds budget. Next item is a request to close a student activity account. And this, this request pertains to the Glenn Fund School Service Award, which is being requested to be terminated. The details are also attached to the document. Item 4.13, another renewal for fiscal year 25. And this is water treatment by design. And the contract renewal is attached in the Agenda Manager here. I didn't see any, any figures attached to that. Is that, is that to say that there's no increase to the contract?
That is correct, no increase.
Okay, thank you. And with financial agenda items out of the way, I'll pass it to Ms. Joel.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Walmer. As a board member, I know each one of us wants to create the best school we can. Everyone around this table cares about all the families, students, teachers, and other staff. We all know there are areas where there are some differences of opinion and in our society right now, and where our district does not have any clear policies on how to approach these differences of opinion. There are people with various beliefs, points of view, and political positions. And I wanted to find answers on how we could best serve everyone as best we can. If we do not institute policy, then that in itself is an action that tells people we have either not fought through how we will handle situations that arise, or worse, that we don't want the public to know what our policy and processes are. As I looked at what some other schools are doing, I came across a number of policies that have been implemented that I discovered were written by Independence Law Center. I was struck by how even-handed the policies are and how they demonstrate care for every student and teacher. Independence Law Center has particular expertise in these constitutional and Title IX areas. And their work in other schools has brought clarity and common sense approaches to these issues where there can be tension. All that to say, we reached out to them because we are interested in retaining them as special counsel to help advise us on the law in these areas and to help us navigate these issues in policy. We invited them here today to just give us a little overview of their firm and what the relationship would look like. So thank you for being here today to speak with us, Mr. Winger and Mr. Senick.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. My name is Jeremy Senick. I'm senior counsel with Independence Law Center. Also have with me Randall Wanger, who's our chief counsel. And so quick, just a little bit about myself. I have been working in the education sphere since probably about 2008. I've been practicing law almost 20 years. I ran for school board. I practiced education, employment law, general civil litigation, and wanted to give back to my community, much like you all are doing here. I was a member of the Air Force Reserve, served in Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom. And so the, the opportunity to serve my community in that way was very important to me. When I was in Pittsburgh, where I'm from, I helped start a legal aid clinic where we provided services free of charge to people who could not afford to pay for particular services themselves. So Independence Law Center represented an entity where I was able to work with people who might not be able to pay for legal services in important areas with First Amendment, free speech, freedom of association, freedom of religion, areas that sometimes create very expensive litigation by individuals and sometimes small companies aren't able to do that. We started representing school boards probably about six or seven years ago. And we made a conscious decision to continue to represent those school boards free of charge as well, because that's the model that we've always operated on. And a little bit about the types of work and cases that we've done. We've had two Supreme Court cases that have run up. And we've had really big changes in constitutional jurisprudence when it comes to employment case law, but also when it comes to accommodations. In our society, we live in a pluralistic society with people who have various beliefs, various perspectives. And sometimes in this country, like other parts of the world, those ideas, those beliefs, they come into some sort of tension. And one of the great things about our country is we've created a society where people can really live and let live, have differences of opinion, but speak to them civilly. The public school system is a place where children who come from various backgrounds, diverse backgrounds with diverse families, diverse makeups, and different beliefs come and learn how they're going to operate in that diverse pluralistic society and do it in a civil and respectful way, even when they have differences of opinion. Our most recent Supreme Court case that was just, came down last summer, changed the 47-year precedent in the United States of America that helped to remedy a misconstruing of Title VII when it comes to accommodations in the workplace. In the school environment, the types of policies that we've been approached to help school district to tackle largely deal with issues, sometimes complex issues dealing with the First Amendment, freedom of speech, harassment, bullying. Because at the end of the day, I think like you said in introduction, I really truly believe that everybody in this room, no matter whether there's some differences of opinion, when you're trying to balance positions and interests and find which way you can move forward and all still get together, we all care about these students in this school district. And I can say that anybody from whatever side or whatever issue it is that are talked about or that are addressed in policy care deeply. I would hope that every teacher in the school district is a safe place for every single student. Whether you're a Republican teacher and you have Democratic students, or vice versa. If you are a religious teacher and have atheist students, or you're an atheist teacher and have religious students, every one of those teachers should be a safe place for your students. And policies should be no different. It's not picking winners and losers as the job of this school board. It's to try to, how can we protect everybody? Recognizing that there's going to be tough questions that we have to answer. Our society, you'd have to be living under a rock to realize that there's difficult questions that have arisen over the past 10 years especially. And there's questions on how can we move forward in a legal way? Absolutely. But in a loving way, in a respectful way, in a way that represents the interests of all students and all families, and takes those into account and then moves forward in a way that, that is best situated to protect everybody, to protect every family, and to make sure that it's legally sound. And so that's one of the reasons why we have, we have been retained by numerous school districts to help them to move forward with these types of issues. A little bit about working with solicitors. School districts, as I'm sure all of you are aware, often hire many attorneys to help them on issues. Stock and Leader and Garrett particularly, and I have worked representing the same school districts in the past. And other attorneys from their firm and I are co-counsel representing districts today. Our objective is never to take the place of your solicitor, to take over their job. We operate as special counsel for a particular purpose. We retain us for a, for a defined purpose, to help for specific policies or specific issues. And we work with your solicitor. And that's worked very nicely in all of the districts that we've represented. It is not about a vote of non-confidence in your solicitor or solicitor firm. In fact, Stock and Leader themselves operate as special counsel in other school districts where they're not the solicitor. So it's a very common practice, no sign of disrespect at all to have additional counsel come in and help. The particular benefit in this case, as a number of people mentioned, is that we do have a reputation for being retained to deal with stuff that are particularly controversial. That's, that's a fact of life. And you as school board members are here and sometimes have to deal with those types of things. And so our objective when we are hired by schools is to help you to navigate these issues in the best way that you can in a legally sound and defensible way that's going to protect all of the students in the school. So we, we have been watching, we have participated in, we have represented superintendents. We've represented principals and table nine areas. We've represented individual school board members. We've represented numerous school boards. We've represented families. We've represented businesses, all in the area of education law. And so when it comes to the particular areas, we have been watching and analyzing case law and working with entities around the country so that we can provide those services to school districts when they request it. So I want to talk briefly about the statements that we are Christian law firms that are sometimes, they say, coming to impose our values, our viewpoints. As attorneys, our job as attorneys is to serve the client's interests, to be objective and neutral, provide both sides to ensure that you have a robust understanding of the law in these sometimes complicated areas. It is not to try to bait winners and losers. It's try to help you to navigate these difficult issues in a legally sound way. Just like anybody, anybody in this room, anybody, any other attorney you'll talk to, everybody has a religion. Everybody has political viewpoints. Everybody has backgrounds. When you put on, when you're representing a client, you're ethically obligated to represent your client's best interest. That's the way that we approach it. And we approach it in a way that is intended to ensure that when writing a new policy, it's to ensure that you're following the law and doing things to make sure that you don't end up in litigation. So let's talk about one particular issue, just because it was brought up. The book issue, the library issue. And I understand that your board has had some conversations in public about that. There's a lot of misunderstanding. When you read a newspaper article or you see somebody who gave a speech and you see a little snippet, sometimes it's hard to really piece together what's actually the issue going on. You may have one person come up and say that they're against pornography and obscenity in schools. You may have some other person come up and say, we're trying to get, somebody is trying to get rid of books that have LGBT characters in it or that deal with race issues. So where's the truth? And how does the law play into this? I can tell you from the clients that we've represented who've wanted to address this issue, how do we do this in a legal way? How do we do it in a way that respects the First Amendment, that respects the freedom of students to be able to read a diverse amount of information and diverse amount of resources coming from various viewpoints? Well, the truth is a little bit in between. There's one thing that I think everybody in this room would agree on when it comes to books in school libraries, especially with families with minors, is that we're not permitted by law, by criminal law, to provide books that would be deemed under our state law as material harmful to minors. Material harmful to minors is a standard that when you, when you play it out, it's the obscenity test for any obscene material geared towards children. And so if you were to give material harmful to minor to students, that would be illegal. It would violate the criminal laws. So what is material harmful to minors? They say it's when you have a book that's geared towards the prurient interest, so excessive interest in sex. And they analyze whether there's any literary or artistic or political value to that material and some others. So that standard is very, very, very high. And it's rightly so, because if you violate that standard, you could potentially face jail time. So that is a very, very high standard. Oftentimes, there are schools that don't put into place, what, is that our baseline standard? As long as we don't go to jail, then this book is age-appropriate and belongs in the school? Or are we permitted to have standards that go beyond that? And so the schools that we've helped represent when it comes to areas of literature have taken that issue and put together some objective standards on what would be age-appropriate for certain age groups. for certain age groups. By way of example, one of those standards is something like if it's visually depicting people engaging in sex acts and then sex acts is defined the way it potentially in law defines it. That being age inappropriate doesn't depend on whether the people engaging in a sex act happen to be a homosexual couple or a heterosexual couple or even an individual by themselves. It's just objectively determined on whether it's visually depicting people engaging in sex acts. And so as a board, you can determine, do we want to draw the line as to what we think is age appropriate as what would lay in us in jail or can we have additional standards beyond that? What's the benefit of putting those standards on paper? Are you more likely to be sued? Well, in reality, you're less likely to be sued. There are schools that have not had anything on paper as to why something is age inappropriate or not age appropriate. And a librarian sees a book, often librarians do not and could not possibly read all of the books that are purchased for the library, there's just way too many of them. And so when they come across a book that has been put in the library, whether it was something that they ordered or some, one of their predecessors, and there's a question, is this age appropriate? They go back to the standards and there may not be standards. If they determine this particular book doesn't appear to be age appropriate and they remove it, they can be sued. They usually win. But the problem is if that book happens to have a homosexual couple or happens to deal with race issues as well, or happens to deal with any other number of factors, it gives a plaintiff's firm the ability to say, well, we think you removed the book because of that information rather than because it visually depicts people engaging in sex acts. And so you go to court, you spend a couple thousand dollars, you get it dismissed on preliminary injunction or summary judgment, but you spent some money. If that same school district had had a policy that said, if you have visual depictions of people engaging in sex acts, we're not going to have that in the junior high school library, they're not getting sued or they're getting that out much, much earlier. And this is a real case. It's called Wentzville, it happened in a federal court and they were sued and it was alleged that it was being removed because of viewpoint discrimination. And what the judge said to the plaintiff's firm, who about 35 times accused the school district and the librarians of Hope Ben, said, that type of overbrought rhetoric has no place in this case. Schools are permitted to create standards for age appropriateness. And a school board who takes the time to put into words what some of those standards are beyond what is illegal to give to minors and land you in jail for doing so are protecting your administration, you're protecting their teachers and you're protecting your librarians from unjust accusations of viewpoint discrimination. Sometimes you'll read in media accounts that, that school districts, and I fully expect if you were to go down this road, or maybe people have already said this about you, that as soon as you start talking about library issues, people will start to call you Hope Banners. They will start to call, call your names that are simply untrue. But when people actually look at the policy themselves, the story changes. So taking, it's hard, it is hard to take a stand on these type of things and to poke your head out of the foxhole. They will say things that are important for you as a district to be able to say, here's what our policy is on paper so that people can understand it and it can remedy a lot of problems in the future. There's a question about whether Independence Law Center policies have caused millions of dollars of liability for school districts. None of the policies that Independence Law Center has drafted has ever been challenged in a court of law. No lawsuit has ever been filed in court against the policies that Independence Law Center has drafted. I think part of the reason is because the common knowledge from maybe reading one newspaper article or reading what somebody's characterization of it is very different from what the policies actually do. The policies that we draft are intended to try to balance, find balance and to help all students and to try to find a way that we can live and let live together. When it comes to the question of the Dover school district, somebody brought it up today and it's something that's probably quite often. My partner Randy Weiner is often accused of costing Dover millions of dollars. For those who aren't aware, a little bit over 20 years ago, there was a, the school district that Dover passed a policy, ill-advised policy that they ended up getting sued over. At the time, Randy Weiner and Independence Law Center hadn't even started yet. He was put in contact with some of the board members and he encouraged him to rescind that policy because he saw the problems with it. He also got in contact with the solicitor of the school district and advised them, you really should rescind the policy because there's problems with it. This school district and the solicitors didn't listen to Randy at the time and they did end up continuing on with that litigation and ended up losing the district or then paying a million dollar settlement. If they would have listened to Randy at the time, they would have avoided that liability. And I'm not just saying that because he's my boss. There is an attorney in the audience who got up and he posed lots of great questions, lots of great questions. What's personal liability of school board members? How does Title IX work in this? What does nondiscrimination laws say about this? What are federal courts saying about these types of issues? Those are precisely the things if you retain us that we are happy to provide and to help you to work through and understand. So when you move forward with a policy that you feel very confident and comfortable as to what the law is and that you can move forward in a way that's really seeking to protect all of your students and promote that live and let live type of environment that we're hoping to create and build these kids up into a society with various different beliefs, but to live and work together civilly and respectfully. The last thing that I want to bring up, and this is sort of a touchy subject, there's oftentimes that people will come and say, policies dealing with sports, for instance, male and female sports, how do we navigate this? There are Title IX regulations and then comments to those Title IX regulations that the Biden administration just answered in a very long, almost 1600 page document. By and large, there's, there are a number of policies that school districts who have retained us, who have passed that are supported more so even today than before those answers came down. And I think that's a testament to the care and forethought that we have put into these types of policies, along with school board members, along with solicitors in various, in various firms across the state of Pennsylvania to make sure that we're really protecting everybody in the school. There will be people, and I want to speak specifically to students here, there will be people who may say things along the lines of that, that maybe members of the board or maybe members of your legal counsel are anti groups of people or that don't want them to exist. And I want to speak to those people right now and tell them that that is false. We live, we live in a wonderful country where people can believe all sorts of things, where people, where people can live and work together, respect each other, stand up for each other. I think this school district is one in which every person in this room cares about every student. You don't have to be the same religion to make sure that somebody is not bullied and mistreated. You don't have to be the same political party to be a loving, respectful teacher. Teachers are capable of that, board members are capable of that, law firms, attorneys are capable of that. And that's our objective as a society. And there will be times when you move forward with these things, if it's with us or without us, that those kind of tensions will be high. But don't, don't forget the shared common ideals that we have in the United States. And so if there's any questions that any of you have, I'd be glad to answer some of those.
So can I understand you correctly in that any of the policies that you helped to draft, there have not been any lawsuits brought against us?
Correct. Yes, there has not been any litigation, any lawsuits filed against those policies. There was a school that didn't retain us, whose administration had done something without policies and then the school board had passed some policies that are related to some of the things that we work on. There was an administrative complaint to the Biden administration about, about bullying. And those, those complaints sat for, I think, about a year and a half or two until the board flipped and they undid its policies and then settled. But during the course of an investigation, it was really based around these accusations of undealt bullying, the firm that the school hired to conduct that Title IX investigation uncovered that there was a teacher who was soliciting instances of bullying, who wasn't passing it on to the administration. So, but none of those cases, none of those ended up in court, neither the Biden administration themselves never did any assessment or had any comment on policies that that school district had passed.
Can you speak to the Boyertown issue?
So the Boyertown case dealt with privacy, bathrooms, locker rooms. So that was where a school board had not passed a policy, so sort of in an untransparent way decided they were going to switch their practice to allow males to identify as females and vice versa, use locker rooms, bathrooms. And so there were students who discovered that in the locker room while they were undressed. And so that case went up to the Third Circuit. We represented the students in that case and this was on the preliminary injunction standard. The court determined that because the school had now given them the ability to go into single user locker rooms and bathrooms, that there were, there was no risk of privacy violations occurring. So that case would have gone back down to the trial court. And that case would be dropped after this Supreme Court and I'd serve on that case. And so one of the, one of the, I guess the features of that case was that while they held that a school could open up bathrooms, locker rooms based on gender identity instead of sex, that court decision never, did not say that schools must. There are two other district circuits, we're in the Third Circuit, the Seventh Circuit and the Fourth Circuit, who said schools must open it up to gender identity instead of sex. The Eleventh Circuit held the exact opposite. And so we had what's called a circuit split where you have numerous circuits coming to different conclusions as to what's required in the privacy area. That Eleventh Circuit case was the most recent. The plaintiffs unfortunately decided not to appeal it to the US Supreme Court. That would have been nice for them to take that in. But they didn't appeal it. Since then, the Biden administration and their new Title IX regulations has essentially said that they, they're leaving that bathroom locker room issue and they think it should be up to, based on gender identity and not sex. They said very different things when it comes to sports, also different things when it comes to parental involvement in decision making for their children. And so there are numerous cases around the country where schools are being sued for hiding information about parents, children. And there's also schools in Pennsylvania who have been sued for just that reason. There are schools who are being sued because they're forcing teachers, they're compelling teachers' speech. And so there is a lot of liability risk in, in schools not having a clear cut standard or policy that deals with those issues ahead of time and balances them in a respectful way that would prohibit people from harassing others by calling them names that they don't want to be called. But also on the other end of the spectrum, prevents whether the school or another individual in the school from compelling somebody to speak things that would violate their conscience. So there's these tensions between these things. And thankfully, the Biden administration actually provided a lot of support that recognizing those tensions that exist and citing cases favorably that held that you cannot compel speech, even as you can't allow harassment. So schools have to balance those interests and that's one of the things that we can help you do if you would be interested in working with us.
A question. If you are offering your services pro bono, how are you funded?
We are funded through individual donations from people across the state. And like I talked about earlier, there are people who just want to make sure that, that folks who can't afford legal services in some important areas that they care about are able to have that type of representation and they're not, they're not chilled from having their constitutional rights protected because they don't have the money and funds to do so. We don't have government, we're not funded by any government entities or government grants or anything like that. It's all from donations.
So if, if we were to get into a legal difficulty, where, where do you stand? Are you supporting us? And as far as funding?
Sure. So if, and I think you guys have a copy of our contract, I believe, but if, we would represent you all the way through if that were to happen. And we, so we would work with, with any insurance counsel to the extent that the school district desired to have additional legal counsel, we can recommend counsel to work with from the insurance side of things. But we, we're fully prepared to represent clients for your charge all the way through. We also, with our school district clients, are available to work with the superintendents or the principals if any issues were to arise in how to handle implementation and are available to consult them throughout implementation of these policies and beyond.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on your answer. When Mrs. Kraus said, you know, what happens if we end up in a legal battle and we need representation? You said something about insurance companies. Who pays that bill?
Yes. So we will represent you free of charge. You also have the option of working with insurance counsel. And we can work with that insurance counsel or without those insurance counsel. That would be up to the board to determine what you would want to do in that situation.
I understand.
But our charges would be, we would be free of charge for all of our legal services.
Insurance counsel to her? I don't understand what an insurance counsel is. Can anyone respond to that?
Your insurance policy would, your insurance policy often hires or recommends counsel. So if there's a slip and fall in your district, you call your insurance company and they would say, hey, here's a, here's a firm that can help you. So that's all.
So, oh, sorry. I raised my hand first. So if there was a lawsuit that was pending and the board would say, no, we don't want to involve our insurance because obviously that would make our insurance rates go up, you would still represent us free of charge even if?
Yes. Yeah. And like, like I said, our goal and what I believe is, can really be helpful, is where you have a policy that clearly explains how you're addressing all of the issues. We're all aware that there are issues and there are question marks on how we can move forward in a way that respects everyone. And so when you do the work of putting together a policy that's addressing all of those different concerns, you're less likely to be sued than if you don't have any set standards. You're more likely to be accused of doing things in a, in a, in a way that is this way one time and this way another time, or this way with one principal or this way with another principal, which can create some problems. Or where things are being done where not a member of the school board or a member of the public is aware of how they're being done. And so there's, there's complicated issues there. And so those are the things that we can help you to work through as a board, through our vast experience with other districts in the state and with the substantive issues that these things are dealing with.
Another question. You made the comment that a librarian can't possibly read all the books, which I think is certainly a valid comment. So who does in your purview? Do your folks read the books and tell us what is allowed and what is not? Or who reads those thousands of books?
No, ma'am. So I think if, if your district is going to be moving forward with policies addressing how do we set age appropriate standards for a district? how do we set age-appropriate standards for a district, you're not looking at any book at all. What you're doing is saying, "What are the standards that we should have in place as to what, what is age-appropriate?" And so, an example, and usually the sexually explicit content is what's at issue. So, the first example is things that would be illegal to give minors. So, material that would be deemed harmful to minors. That's an easy one, because that's required by law. But beyond that, where do we draw the line? And I would suggest drawing that line differently in high school, middle school, elementary school, and then putting some objective standards that are not related to any particular, no viewpoint, to ensure that there's no viewpoint discrimination happening. I'll give you an example, and this is a book that I, that is not in your library, so that's why I'm going to use it. There's an illustrated novel about a TV show or game of thrones. And it's a, it's an illustrated novels that are in a number of school districts in Pennsylvania. And it shows graphic descriptions of people engaging in sex acts on each other, both from nudity, all sorts of things. And so, what standards do you judge and what do they say is appropriate? You can do it based off of what somebody's subjective opinions are. The problem and the difficulty is if those books have people from various ethnicities, right? They have people of various sexual orientations and backgrounds. Is that the reason the book is being discussed? Not really. It's not at all. Right? But people can accuse you of that, and that can create problems for the school. That can create problems for the librarian, or maybe the superintendent who made that determination. So, when you have set standards in place that are objective, that say, "We're not going to remove any books based on viewpoint discrimination, based on who's in the book," wait, another example would be if there's a book about, about Mary and Sue going on a romantic date, or John and Sue going on a romantic date. Age-appropriate standards wouldn't be dealing with, right? That's not sexually explicit type content. But if either of those books, with both of those couples involve them pages of explicit descriptions of the sex acts that they're performing with each other, those might fall below standards in a school district unrelated to the type of grouping of the individuals. Does that make sense?
It does, but I just question what then becomes the role of the librarian and the administrators who are overseeing our libraries? Is their job done now because somebody else is going to move in and say, "What can and can't be in our library?", which in my opinion is handled fantastically. We've had zero complaints. I just, I just can't wrap my head around.
No. So, there's no, the policies that we've helped school districts implement, dealing with this issue, it's not a, it's not a search and destroy decision, because now everybody has to go and read every single book in the library. But when, at times where a book comes out and it's like, "Well, this one might, maybe this one is more appropriate for the high school library than the middle school library", or something like that, when those determinations need to be made, having some objective standards in place is protective for the people making those decisions. Some schools have made a determination to say, "We're going to have the librarians in consultation with the principals with these determinations." Some have said, I think your neighbor in Bermudian Springs said, "If there's a, that's how it'll be done, and if there's a question, if it's like a borderline, we're not really sure", then they have a committee of people who take an additional look at it. So, people can, schools can do all sorts of different ways on how to address those, those question marks. But when you have the objective standards, it ensures, number one, what I think everybody here would want, to ensure that there is no viewpoint discrimination, that books are not being removed because of the color of skin, or, or because it deals with racial issues, or because it deals with a human sexuality in, in ways that people may agree to disagree on. But to make sure they're not an objective manner.
Any other board members have a comment or questions? As per Policy 903, as the presiding officer, I am allowed to grant someone to speak that's not on the agenda. I'm not opening the floor up to everyone. There is a person in the back of the room who's been raising his hand patiently, and I think wants to ask a question, Mr. Adamix. So, if you would like to ask a question, I will allow it.
I don't understand how we can offer free services. I've mentioned the Biden administration, and the five lines of order of presentation, but basically providing free services to upper-end school districts.
Is the Biden administration providing free services to upper-end school districts?
Where's your money coming from? This state's money, it takes money, and unfortunately, it's got to come from somewhere. It's not, it's not.
Sure. Sure. Individual donations. Individual donations.
But basically, why you mentioned it five times earlier, I mean, are they the ones paying for it?
Are they the ones?
To support providing services?
Yeah, individual donations paid for. Make sure that our entity can operate, yes. So, and that's very, the same as the Legal Aid Plan that we run. Individual donations helped us to do the work that we do, just like many other 501(c) free organization in legal services.
I do, I do have another question. I think Mike clarified. So, when you're saying of individual donations, you mean people all over the country are donating money for you to represent people if your policies would end up in a lawsuit? Is that correct? Like, in other words, if you helped to draft a policy, a lawsuit is brought and it needs to go to court, you're free of charge because people all over the country have donated money for you to use for that representation? Is that correct?
For all the representations that we do, yes.
Right, for everybody that you do. I think what he's trying, maybe, and I don't mean to speak for him, but if those donations are coming from religious or, you know, politically oriented people, does that affect your representation?
No. Our ethical duty is to serve the client's interests, and, and that's what we do.
And I'm not sure if that's, you know, what he was, but I'm just trying to get my own mind wrapped around that.
Right.
In other words, it doesn't matter who is funding the money.
That's correct.
The representation is done by the law.
Yes.
But the law is being presented.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would even add, just as an example, there are situations where, where a parent or a grandparent might pay legal fees for their adult son that's in legal trouble. Even though that, that grandparent or is paying those fees, that attorney's ethical obligation is to serve the client and not to run the litigation based on the dictates of the person who is, is making payments. And that would be an even closer situation than here, where the donors are largely, I mean, unrelated to, they're not getting money for specific cases to support their organization.
Right. It goes into like a general fund.
Correct.
And then it gets dispersed.
Yep. Does that help?
Go ahead.
No.
I will allow one or two public comments here or questions, so, right here.
So, I'm hearing that your recommendations are in order to make the school culture a safer place by pulling things out that might cause any kind of conflict that might come to the school board or the school. So, basically, the more we take away to make it safer, the safer we will be from having somebody come up and tell us that we're wrong. Just take this away because it's really not a good idea, and this makes, this might not be a safe thing in the public, and then maybe this other thing, just really doesn't make you feel as safe as you would let everybody in your nice little circle to feel. So, given that, I also hear.
Could you give, could you give an example?
Well, I just mean by taking certain books away because they're sexually explicit, no matter what the learning that has come from it, maybe because they include a rape or something like that. So, any, but I'm not gonna.
Yeah, so I have.
So, that might make it a safer place for the school library, therefore, it might eliminate anybody bringing conflict to the superintendent or the librarian. But if you recommend that therefore we remove these books, and we don't agree, you know, the board says, or, or, you know, I, I think that this book is a really, it's a book cowed to enough by the Library Association, et cetera, et cetera. But you told them, this is not safe for your school. Then I heard you say just now, that where people did continue to get in trouble was when they didn't take your advice, correct? They didn't take the advice that you had given to make the school, don't you?
To the school district.
To make the school safe.
That wasn't about libraries.
Well, but what I'm hearing, this would make you safer, and it's true. And you know, the tighter we build our fence and keep our children in, the safer they are. That's true. There's no doubt. You don't go as far as intellectual freedom, or how much they learn perhaps from some books that might not be our favorite subject. But wait, so if you're telling the board and, and the community that this isn't safe, and you need to be safe, and then, and then as a group, be it the community or the school board, together decide, "Well, we think that this is okay," then the fact that you disagreed with their decision, does that pull you, then you say, "Well, I just can't be a part of this anymore if you can't take my recommendations, so go it on your own"?
So, I never said that any particular book is safe or unsafe, but what I was.
That's right. You said certain things in a book might make it unsafe.
No, no, that's not accurate. So, what, what would be, what would be problematic is if, if people looked at, let's say, the book that I referenced, the Game of Thrones, illustrated novel, and they said, "You know, I don't think this is appropriate for children in high school."
But we don't have that book, right?
You don't have that book, that's why I used that example. So, what criteria does one determine as to what is appropriate, what is inappropriate? And so, for a district, you have one criteria that you have to abide by, including American Library Association, which is, is it material harmful minors, is it illegal to use kids? So, the question before, and for the community who elect a board, is, is that the standard? Is that the only standard we ought to have when it comes to age appropriateness? Or ought we have additional standards? And if so, what aren't? As, as an attorney, Garrett's role and my role is not to say, "Here's where we think the standard should be." That's your role. That's your role to determine how you're going to make those determinations. So, when it comes to safety, if you're going to make a determination that goes beyond, "Will we go to jail for providing this to a kid?", it's good to have it in writing so that there's some guidelines that people can point to, so that it can't be wrongly alleged that the reason it is being addressed is because of illegal viewpoint discrimination. Because I can tell that you and I would very much agree on intellectual freedom and, and protect the person's mental rights when it comes to things like libraries and the ability to rate a person on a determination.
The school has already gone to a great deal of work to have the Pennsylvania School Board Association approve any policy changes. So, do you disagree with the, the work of Pennsylvania School Board Association when it comes to what their lawyers advise, or policies that they, what their changes that they advise?
So, when I was a school board member, I was, I was appointed to be on the Legislative Platform Committee for the School Board Association. Great, great. And then I was also on their, their Bylaws Committee, attended all of the, the events that they have out in Hershey, so I absolutely recognize the value of the Pennsylvania School Board Association. But when the School Board Association provides policies, they're not providing legal advice. They very clearly say, "We are not providing legal advice to you." So, that is for your attorneys to look at and make an assessment of, for your circumstance in your school district. They do provide a helpful benefit. For instance, when there's a law passed related to a school board policy, they'll let the school board know, "Hey, there's a new law, here's how you can modify some existing policies." I'm not aware of, of Pennsylvania School Board Association policies that tries to impose whatever they think age-appropriate standards are. Those are up for the individual school boards to make those determinations. But I am aware that they would say things that we would 100% agree with, which is, we will not tolerate viewpoint discrimination, will not tolerate infringement of First Amendment rights, will not tolerate religious discrimination, ruling books just because it deals with a religious topic that makes people feel uncomfortable. So, it's not about, it's, it's not at all about trying to make a determination of what book is safe or not. If you're making a determination based off of the most strict parent in the district, or making a determination on the most loose parent in the district, on what a particular kid in eighth grade, you're probably not doing a great job of making those kinds of assessments. You're trying to make policies that apply for everybody in the district as best you can. It's not trying to make things to the lowest common or highest common denominator for the person with the most strength who's loose standards. So, hopefully that was helpful. I'll take.
And yes, it's a time, I'm going to do two more.
Two more?
Two more. That's okay. You had your hand up first.
You said that there were no lawsuits. Have there been accusations?
So, accusations of, it was like.
I guess, school district or policies that you could tell.
Right. Have there been accusations of?
Of discrimination, or any of those sorts that have caused this and discrimination?
Uh, no. No, there haven't.
But no accusations against policies for anything discriminatory or anything? After you've read them, has there been anything?
No, no, no court, not even the Biden administration's education.
I didn't say, I just said accusations. Earlier, I did let everybody know that, I mean, there's accusations against the school district, and even though that didn't go to court, it still costs the school district money. So, my question has nothing to do with court. I'm talking headlines, I'm talking people accusing, you know, the school district of discriminatory anything, or going against, or going against any sort of group of people. That was my question.
Yeah, so, there, there are people who, who will come up. Maybe they haven't read the policies that school districts have implemented, or maybe a school district hasn't even presented any policies that they want to promote, and people accuse them of all sorts of things. And that, that really can't be helped. But what can be helped is that you do the due diligence that is required of you as board members, to try to understand what the law is in these, these areas, and to, to put pen to paper and address issues in a way that's transparent for the public, so people are aware of how decisions are going to be made. That's, that's really the best you can do.
So, the answer is yes. All right. And then you said that, you know.
So, is there a second person who's going to answer the question?
Yes, one more.
Okay.
One more. He had his hand up back there. Sorry.
So, you mentioned you're a funding, and you say that people donate. Do you have a list of your contributors that donated to your locker room to help support it? Have you presented it to the board, has the board refuted?
501(c) organizations don't publish the list of the individual donors. That's not the practice of 501(c).
They have to know, whether it's backed by a religious organization or another organization that doesn't mind LPTQ or certain religions.
Well, I mean, I, I would take that as an accusation that you as a lead, that we would be an organization who wouldn't follow the ethical duties that lawyers are, are required to follow. And I, and I appreciate that if you are, if, if people can be worried if there's folks that don't agree with them and they're supporting, I, I completely understand that. But I don't think I can do anything more than telling you that our obligation is to support the clients and try to help them. So, I encourage you, sir, to look at policies that we've passed in other districts.
I don't think that, thank you very much. How I've worked with the teacher parks, that. Our, I have been at the school, being in the line, with the programs, needing to have students, I saw eighteen, but this is a fine. Ticians, Olympia, the birth of Venus, they are crap. There are stories behind them that talk about the rape of the same by women to sacrifice themselves for rent. When you were talking about stories and visualizations of those, I am distorted, of art, that is my degree, and that sparked it at a young age, are you saying that they violated that right of me as a thirteen-year-old and twelve-year-old when I went to the museum? And do you guys then go into the museum and cover?
And do you guys then go into the museum and cover the art that's too vulgar for the school district or go on as a field trip?
So I don't believe that, I believe that I must have been very unclear when I was explaining to how the standards for these things work. The school districts, the school boards, when they put together standards on what is appropriate for certain ages, have the ability to make draw lines like that. And quite frankly, if you are so inclined to indicate if you weren't, you would see that school districts who have past policies like that make a, explain that when you're dealing with things like art, classrooms of art and such, that those things can be protected. And school boards can do all sorts of unique things, but they have to make sure that they're providing for those robust opportunities. Like you said, the impact that art has had on their life is a wonderful thing, and the school districts are making these determinations, they're taking all of these things into account to ensure that they can provide the best material they can for the finite amount of space that's in their libraries, that's in their curriculum, to say, what is the best material we have? Are there things that fall below that standard? There may be, maybe not. But the school district putting it on the paper ensures that what's not happening is things are being removed under cover of night for viewpoint discriminatory reasons.
Any other board members have any comments?
I just, I'm sorry, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
I can say something. You know, it's interesting to hear the back and forth here, and there's some passionate views. You know, I saw a story, it was recent, a couple months ago, and it was the Bucks County Beacon, and their headline was, "The Independent Law Center Seeks to Impose Its Biblical Worldview on Pennsylvania School Districts." I've heard that comment sort of echoed out in the audience and maybe intimated on the school board here. I read through a couple of the policies, in fact, all four, three or four of your policies, and it didn't strike me that there was any biblical overtones in these policies. It didn't seem like it was pushing a certain view on anybody. So, you know, with that said, maybe it would be important for the school district to post policies that Independence Law Center has put forth and read it, read them thoroughly and see if some of these headlines, like, "The Independent Law Center Seeks to Impose Its Biblical Worldview on the Pennsylvania School Districts," see if that actually applies to those policies. I contend it doesn't.
I appreciate that. And one of the things that we always request members of the media to post links to is policies. Rarely do they take us up on that, but sometimes they do. And that's always an appreciated step because there are people from maybe an opposing viewpoint on certain things who might say, you know, and who reached out and said, I kind of see what you're doing here, this kind of makes sense. It works sort of the way that we understand first amendment. I might not agree with everybody, but I would fight for the right to be able to say it. That principle that I think we all value when it comes to things like the freedom of speech is a principle that really intersects with a lot of the policies that we are helping the school districts to move forward. And so I encourage everybody to take time, sort of take time to look at those policies if you can. I understand that people are busy, but that's, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
I'll wave to.
Yeah, we're done with public comment. Sorry. Throw it out quick.
I was just curious, Board Member DeJol said that she had contacted the Independence Law Center because she was interested in specific policy areas and saw that they had drafted them for other districts. I was curious to the board, what are the specific policy areas that Upper Adam School District thought that they would be valuable for so that we can know which policy areas you're looking for counsel on so that they can be drafted? And why that expertise is needed over Stock and Leader, who are clients of the school district and not clients of their special interest owners?
Sir, I could just barely hear you myself, and I'm sure that others could not. Could you repeat it at a much louder volume, please?
I was curious, Board Member DeJol, in her introduction stated that she had found the Independence Law Center when looking at the policies of other districts that had been written to address certain issues. I think that because we already have a solicitor and a company that represents the school as a client, I wanted to know what were those particular policy areas that they were, decided they needed additional counsel on from the Independence Law Center so that we can understand what are these areas that this counsel is needed for and why they're superior in that to Stock and Leader, particularly because Stock and Leader represents the district as a client and are paid by the district as a client to keep us out of legal trouble as opposed to a firm which is funded by private special interests, which we've just learned are not available to the public, to know who that is and what their interest might be in providing us free legal counsel to address these things.
Mr. Schreuder, just briefly, I am chair of the policy committee. And if you've been following our meetings since March, we've been trying to get to the 109.1, and that keeps moving along. We will be discussing that in August when we have the next policy meeting. But I can say as policy chair that that's the only policy that has been available or for discussion. So maybe someone else on the board can answer to the rest of your question.
Well, as far as I understand, and I'm just kind of learning the ropes here, but policies come up on a regular basis, don't they? Like, is there like a schedule that the policies come up for review or?
From what I understand, there are some recommendations quarterly that come from PSBA.
So it'd be more from my understanding, when a policy is up for review, it would be like having a second opinion. I don't think there was specific policies in mind.
I thought from the introduction that there was some policy.
I've used the analogy, that the board is probably sick of it, but in our business, if I'm going to build something, I'm going to have a general contractor, and I'm going to trust the general contractor. He's going to do the job, and he's going to find the people to get the job done. I can't wrap my head around why we have a general contractor sitting two seats down and we also need somebody else to come in and throw darts. I can't get my head around that.
To answer your question, thank you. Some of the policies I was looking at that Red Lion has adopted have to do with male and female sports teams and locker rooms and pronouns and things like that, and parental consent for, you know, social transitioning at school, like keeping that, like some districts have a policy of not, of keeping certain things secret from parents. And so I wanted to see how other schools were dealing with that because I believe that parents are the primary educators of their children, and so there's some concern about that. So that's what I was looking at. And school boards hire special counsel all the time for different reasons. And this is like really quite specific to Title IX and First Amendment issues. And so I really, I really, when I looked at the policies that they have written up or helped Red Lion, right, I'm like, wow, this is so fair to everyone involved. It's fair to the parents, it's fair to the students, it protects the teachers. And as a teacher myself, I am a certified teacher, I speak four languages, I'm an internationally recognized expert in culturally responsive, socially emotional learning. I, I'm a certified, I'm, I don't want to go through all my lists of things. I am, I am an educator, certified teacher, secondary English language arts teacher, and I speak Spanish, ESL, I teach for higher education, the Graduate School of Education. Sorry? Jim, are we just going to have a roundtable now?
We're not. No, we're not. We're going to wrap this up.
You answered the public as public elected officials, correct? And would you say you have talked to our already present, our already retained lawyer about the policies that you've been concerned about?
I'm sorry, we're going to move on tonight. We're not going to answer any more questions. We, I did give some leeway there that we normally don't give, so we are going to move on tonight. This isn't a voting meeting. This will come up again at our June 18 meeting. So be prepared to be there for the voting meeting. That will take us to personnel. Mrs. Plank, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Right. Item 5.2.1, accept the following professional resignation. Danielle Horst, school guidance counselor, Biglerville High School, effective June 30, 2024. Holly Jones, science teacher, Biglerville High School, effective the end of the 2023-2024 school year. Item 5.2.2, approval to post and advertise the following professional positions. School guidance counselor, Biglerville High School, and science teacher, Biglerville High School. Item 5.2.3, hire the following professional staff. Nicole Salt, math teacher, Biglerville High School, master, step 11, $76,514, effective the start of the 2024-2025 school year, replacing Teresa Friss. Daniel Munster, Delag teacher, Biglerville High School, instructional one, step one, $54,514, within additional 10 days, added per diem raise, replacing Scott Howard. Item 5.4.2, supplemental contract, educational for extended school year, 7-1, 2024 to 7-25, 2024. Audrey Jacob, instructional assistant, regularly hourly rate for 2024-2025, not to exceed 16 hours per week. Amanda Kinnick, instructional assistant, county services, hourly rate for 2024-2025, not to exceed 16 hours per week. Item 5.5, add the following individuals to the volunteer listing. Heidi Careblass, retroactive to 5/23, 2024. Amy Thomas, retroactive to 5/24, 2024. And Wesley Thomas, retroactive to 5/24, 2024. Item 5.6.1, make the following changes to the other contracted services, air market fully listing, remove Michael Coleman, and add Heather Matthews, custodian, retroactive to 5/30, 2024. And I believe that is all for personnel.
Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Plank? Thank you, Mrs. Plank.
You're welcome.
Does another board member have anything else, Plank?
I have something I'm going to say. I'm not a speechwriter. I've been sitting here taking some notes and listening to everybody. I appreciate everybody's input. I know everybody's very passionate about this. I'm going to start out by just saying, when I was appointed to the board before I was elected, and I was asked what my agenda was, and my answer at first, when I was asked, and actually I was sitting in a room with all the current state board members and all the administrators, so there was probably 20 people in the room that night when I was interviewed. My first response was, I don't have an agenda. Then I thought about it a little bit, and I said, well, if you want me to give you an agenda, my agenda is to preserve what's here. I graduated from here, my kids have gone here, I still have a child here. I'm proud of this school and proud of this community. My agenda was to preserve that, to be fiscally responsible to this community, which we have been. We've had zero tax increase for several years. We're headed there this year. I'm sitting here as the president of this board, and I'm asking myself, why are we at where we're at? You know, it's true, I was a township supervisor for several years, and I've learned one thing in public government. When there's not a problem, people don't come to meetings. Our meetings for the last sense of COVID, and those meetings were pretty minimal. Not well-attended meetings, administrators, news reporter, that's about it, not a lot going on. And now 2024, and here we are. So the public is here, they're voicing their opinions, they're upset about things that are happening, and they're passionate about what's happening. I don't understand, I'm asking myself, you know, why? We didn't have any problems. People are sitting here because there's problems being created. We didn't have a problem at this board, the community was happy because people weren't coming to the meetings. I'm glad people are here, I'm glad there's attendance. It's nice to see faces because usually there was just, no offense, but just the administrators. That was our, that was our audience. I'm glad you're here, but also know you're taking a lot of time out of your lives because you're passionate about this. And I do believe problems were being created that did not exist. Books have been in this library, probably the same books have been here since I graduated 35 years ago. I'm going to ask the question, and you don't know, I don't want an answer, but the question is, realistically, how many kids are walking into that library looking for a certain book that has a certain expert in it? In a matter of two seconds, they can pick this up and be looking at anything. You know, Biglerville High School has been handed a lot of accolades. You know, we're ranked high both nationally and through the state. Biglerville, imagine that, Biglerville, little old Biglerville. Our teachers are great, our administrative staff is great, I trust our teachers with our kids. Two of my children have graduated. We, our children receive great educations. Look at the class of 24. Look how many kids are going on to hire their education. When I asked that question at graduation, for those of you that weren't there, I'm going to guesstimate it was about 90% of the kids stood up, they're going on to further their education. There was five or six that are going into the military. And there is some that are joining the workforce, which part of our mission statement is career and college ready. That's what we're here to do. Doesn't matter who walks through that door, doesn't matter their religion, doesn't matter their race, doesn't matter their gender identity, we are here to provide them an education as a public educator. I will admittedly say, do I agree with things that are going on in society today? I don't. But I sit at this table at a public school board, committed to offer everybody that walks through that door regardless, the education that they deserve. I do believe. I do believe, and I've thought long and hard, and probably I'm going to make people laugh, been trying to think of an analogy for ILC, and I really wish they were still sitting here, but they left. My analogy of ILC, and this is going to come off hillbilly, redneck, whatever you want to call it, but it looks like three witches standing over a pot with their witches hat stirring the pot. And they're going to leave us hanging. I think we risk with some of the policy changes, there's risking of losing federal funding, which would be detrimental to our community with our free breakfast, reduced lunches, it would be detrimental to our community. There's risk of that. It's not free. We all know that. You know, he couldn't even answer the question straight. You know, it's not free. Again, I don't feel as though there's a problem with Upper Adam School District, and I hope the directors can sit back and reflect. I was going to save my statements for the voting meeting, but I felt like everybody needed time to stew on it at our voting meeting. So again, thank you, everyone, for showing up. Thank you for your support and your passion on your stance. Thank you, directors, for doing the job that you do. And I hope we all can really think deeply about things for the next two weeks before we have this vote.
Thank you, Jim.
No other board members have anything else? We are adjourned. Have a good evening.